We'll open the meeting, the planning board for the town of Halifax. Our meeting's taking place in the town hall at 499 Plymouth Street in Halifax, Mass. In the selectmen's meeting room. Today's date is Thursday, August 21st, 2025. And to make the announcement, the planning board meeting is being recorded by Area 58 and can be viewed on YouTube. Okay, just for attendance wise, we have our present, the full board. We have Amy Trup, Bert Gainer, myself, Tom Millius. A big welcome to our brand new member, James Walsh. And then we have Bruce Sylvester being Zooming in from pots unknown. Okay, I'll accept the motion to accept the minutes as presented?
The agenda.
What did I say? The motion, the agenda, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Unanimous, thank you.
Do we need to do, not a vote like that, but all votes with, we need to, yeah, roll call because of him being on Zoom, remember?
Right.
So what did you want to do?
Because we have to roll call because we have a Zoom.
Okay, let's do the roll call. Amy Trup?
Yes.
Present, myself, present, Bert Gainer, Tom Millius.
Yep, yes.
Jim Walsh?
Yes.
Sorry, Jamie Walsh and Bruce Sylvester.
Right.
Right, thank you. Unanimous. Okay, in order to, I'd like to, before we do the appointments, I'd like to kind of skip and go right down to, we've been putting this off since we haven't had a full board member. So I'd like to reorganize for the year now that we have a full board. So we will be voting for chairman, the position of vice chairman, and then the position of clerk. So, well, I'll start it off. I'd like to nominate Tom Millius as chairman of the Halifax Planning Board. That is my motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second?
You have to do a roll call.
I'll just call, I'll do a roll call vote. Bruce Sylvester, for Mr. Millius as chairman of the planning board, your vote?
Yes.
Amy?
No.
My vote is yes. Tom?
Yes.
And Jamie?
Yes.
It passes, four to one. All right, now I'll accept a motion for the position of vice chair.
I'll move Bert Gainer for vice chair.
There's a motion on the floor to nominate Bert Gainer as vice chair. Do I have a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Again, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Bruce, your vote?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
Myself, yes. Tom?
Yes.
And Jamie?
Yes.
Unanimous. And for the last position of clerk of the Halifax Planning Board?
I'm hoping Amy would accept that position. I'll nominate her.
There's a motion on the floor out to nominate Amy Trup. I'll second that. Okay, I'll ask for a voice vote. Bruce?
Yes.
Amy?
Okay.
Myself, yes. Tom?
Yes.
And Jamie?
Yes.
Unanimous. Okay, there's our new board. Awesome.
Okay. Yay.
Yay. Want to switch seats?
Nah. No, no, I think I'm good, right here. The further away from the line of fire, the better. We have some appointments. We're going to start with 358 Industrial Drive. We've had some input. I don't know how much involvement you've had. I believe you've spoken, the applicant rather, Mr. Paul Newcomb. I believe you've spoken to the fire chief. As I happened to do today, and I think Bert's also spoken to him. There was some confusion about the plan that you presented. When we, when I first saw it, I was concerned that the buildings actually got a little closer and would be a little harder to operate inside. But after having spoken to the fire chief, he seems to be comfortable with either combining the buildings. I didn't know if that was an option for you.
We have plans.
Okay, so that, that, that is probably the best solution to the whole thing.
Probably, yeah.
And then you can leave the 20 feet up front between the existing building and the first building.
He told me that you keep them separate or what?
That's what he said.
20 feet from the office building to the other building. The other two buildings, he said, he didn't see how it looked there.
Yeah.
As long as I put a fire hydrant in.
Correct. Now, that's, that's exactly what he said to me.
Maybe the 20 feet look higher than, what do we got there? Everyone cares.
Yeah, 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 well, it's.
Is that what it sprinkled in?
Well, if it wasn't sprinkled, I could understand the motivation for not wanting to combine them because then you'd have to sprinkle them. But if you're sprinkling them anyway. So I don't know if anybody else has any questions?
Yes, I met the fire chief and Tom the day before. And he did, I asked, we asked him to send an email out so we had it all written and whatnot. I guess I'm making a lot of, I'm making a lot. His first concern was with the Mass General Law, knowing that we needed a fire hydrant within 500 feet. I see it's noted on, we received the new plan this afternoon, about quarter or two, 10 minutes or two, something like that. And I see you do have a fire hydrant that's actually on the property. I took a rough measurement and got about 260 feet. So it had to be a maximum of 500, so 260, 270, is that what you got, somewhere around there?
I didn't measure it. I just knew that.
I just used a ruler. I just went by scale.
I was only 500, so I just put it in on my property.
Yeah, that's what I, that's, I just took a rough. See, it's up there in the top right-hand corner, Jamie? Right up there on the inside. And the other thing he was concerned with was moving the.
Dumpster bed.
Dumpster. The dumpster that was on the north side of the, of the building. And I see you moved that way to the back.
Yep.
Again, we went round and round about, I did not know, we, right here, this used to be here, and now it's way down here. So that the trucks can get around.
But the dumpster?
The dumpster's here.
Yeah, it's here.
Yeah. Where are you pointing?
That's still nowhere the 20, inside the 20 feet though, right?
No, dumpster is, isn't it?
Because there's 20 behind the building.
Right.
Yeah, it used to be right here.
Yeah, it was right on the wood job.
Which I was never putting it here. He just threw it on there. He said it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, no, no, you're all set.
It's a big dumpster wherever you want.
You're all set. I was looking at this and thinking, you're going to leave this down further.
The only other thing he mentioned, Paul, was that the tight tanks, the septic and whatnot, that there'd be, he used the term.
Road rated.
He used the term road rated.
Yeah, they have to be the H.
Your trucks have got away a gazillion times, and he was concerned with the fire trucks also.
Yeah, they're all going to be rated.
Yeah, they're all good?
Yeah.
So.
These ones already are.
Yeah, you were already going to do that anyway?
Yeah.
Doesn't that make sense? You know, yeah. No question.
My only other question is.
I am going to do away with this grass here.
Okay, that was my next question.
Which I told Webby, but he didn't have, he had.
It was confusing over.
He's like, I don't really know how to do this computer stuff.
Yeah.
And Greg wasn't in, so he's like, I'll try my best.
Yeah, it was confusing over here where it said grass. So what are you going to put in? Is it gravel, packed gravel?
Yeah, recycled, recycled.
Yeah, that's what you want because you don't want to change the drainage calculus.
Well, that was the other thing, that the, if it was asphalt.
But I still have all the drainage in anyways, even if not.
Yeah.
If I plan on paving it someday, there are taller you there.
Right. And the chief wasn't too concerned, he made mention of, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, that as long as there were three sides of the structure.
That he could get around.
That he could get around with 20 feet. So where this originally was 12, and I think this was.
This is going to be connected.
Yeah.
I think Webby was just having a hard time doing it. I'm guessing, I don't know why he left it like that.
Was it like a passage?
I would leave it with the 20, just in case he needed it around.
Didn't that air enough for him to get in there to side both sides?
Yeah.
Yeah, right, three kids in the way. Better off putting this together and leaving the 20 out here because otherwise.
There was 12 years before.
So I told him to put eight more feet here.
Yeah.
And then there was only, what?
I thought it was 12.
It was 12. It was 12.
It was 12.
This plane.
I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, this is an old plane from, yeah, it was 12. This is from March. 12.
Yes, just.
Yeah, so I told him to take the 12, the 12 from here, put eight here.
Right.
And then take the other floor and move the building closer.
Yeah, that's, that's the smart move.
Yeah.
And I think the gravel going around to make it more accessible, God forbid if anything happens.
Well, this gives you, if you leave this at three, it gives you the three sides he needs without having to do too much work out here.
This is going to be together, it's going to be four.
Right, yeah, but he only needs three.
Yeah.
So.
Which is, I think this is going to be better for you.
Yeah.
Honestly, it took a couple of weeks, but I think this is going to be better for you.
Well, yes and no. Because originally my plan was to pack my trucks in here, but I have 10 acres in East Bridgewater that I'm going to put a building and put all my trucks in, and probably end up renting these out someday down the road. But if anyone wants to rent them with a commercial vehicle, they can't because there's no sprinklers, so just sprinkle it and be done.
And that was the other thing, as long as you were on the topic of sprinklers. He made a big distinction. The fact that the existing building up front, the one that says existing building, Jamie from far left.
Yep.
That is not sprinkled, but these two are going to be sprinkled.
Correct.
So he did say he had, he had some leeway to play with if, as long as, you know, the two new ones were sprinkled and not necessarily the front one.
Not the.
Because there's no vehicles in that one, right?
Not the throw flowing in as the ointment here. He said.
And that side is about a hair shop.
Yeah.
Salon, yes, salon.
Oh, it is again?
Oh, it's been for years since I owned it.
That's this side, right?
Barbara Rinses sat over here, and I'm on this side.
Oh, so you switched because originally all the plumbing was on this side. This is the front, this is the street. Because originally the tanning salon was here originally.
Yeah, that's where it is.
Okay, yeah, but the beauty salon was on this.
Yeah, that's why I was confused.
Since Cory owned it?
Well, they might have moved it.
When I rented it off to Cory?
Yeah.
I've always been on this side, and she's always been on that side.
Well, they probably just moved, the plumbing was all on this wall, so they just probably put it.
I think it's plumbing on both sides of the wall, to be honest.
Yeah, yeah. And the restrooms are down at the back.
In the back, yeah, on that side. Well, in the middle, actually.
In the middle, yeah.
So where are we? I guess bottom line, if the fire chief is happy, you know, there wasn't anything else or was there anything else?
The only thing that just came up, which I wish you didn't say, is parking for four Like, if you rent them out.
You rent them out.
I'm not renting them right now, I'm parking my trucks in them.
I know. But in order to do that, you might have to come back and add parking in the future in order to rent them out because, am I wrong? Because I don't think I am. I'm, I'm just telling you, because parking, like now you're going to have employees for each one of those where now, right now.
Not necessarily. If there's storage, you don't have.
There's storage.
Storage, plus someone wants to pack their empty car in there.
Yeah, if there's storage.
Plus they have all this parking here, and then they have all that parking there.
Yeah, I was going to say you still.
You'd have to just make it, yeah. I'm just, I'm just letting you know that if they had like a secretary and like, or, you know, or people going into an office there every day, then it would require that.
There would be parking.
Well, I have 25 employees now that park in there.
I'm not being difficult, I'm just pointing.
Yeah, but you don't have the buildings there now, so.
What's the bylaw?
The bylaw for parking is that if you added, like, so say you added these one, two, five.
There's nine of them.
Yeah, whatever you, like, just say you rented out four. If there was four employees of each one of them, then you'd have to have parking for it, like it would, so we'd have to have you leave without parking for it.
You could do some along the side as long as you left your 20 feet around the building.
I'm just letting you know.
If and when that comes up, you have to come back, that's all.
Yeah.
It's all based on square footage, you're sitting up here.
It would just be adding parking spots, okay? I'm just letting you know.
Right.
You go parking.
Any other questions? Jamie, what do you got?
No, I'm good.
No, pardon.
Bruce, you got anything? Any questions?
No questions, actually. The plan is here.
I think we can approve it subject to putting some, a couple of stipulations in there.
I was just going to make a motion, you want me to stop?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions that we've talked about, so I'm just going to cite them for the let up. We're going to, just as a note, we're going to do, you're going to do away with grass and make it recycled gravel on the north side. That's the north, right?
This is, north is this way.
Yeah, okay.
Just move some of the asphalt, not gravel.
You're sprinkling the one building, so we'll just need the plan to show that it's one building. Drive rated, heavy equipment, I'm sorry, drive rated for road rated, right?
For the subsurface structures.
For the subsurface structures. And the fire hydrant. And the only question I have, which I meant to.
Amy, this was different, so we should probably put that in.
And the dumpster moved to the back southeast corner. The only thing that I'm just thinking of right now is, does the fire hydrant need like the pylons that stick out of the ground near it with, or anything like that? Or is it going to be enough out of the, you might want it just in case one of the trucks hit it, just.
She's talking about baller grass area, it's only on the.
Okay, I'm just saying, as a note, you might want to, just so that nobody runs it over. Does that make sense to you? You might want to think about installing something.
When you do that, the water department might want you to put the ballers in anyway, just to protect it. So in case you hit it, we don't got to, yeah, we don't have.
And then it goes off skyrocketing in water everywhere, just a thought. I'm not necessarily think, I'm thinking that just for yourself, not.
I see.
Okay. So does that, do you want me to make it more clear, or you want me to just?
If you just want to.
Can you guys write those down if you don't mind?
I have them written on mine. My minutes, I'll write them down as the meeting goes on.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, just so that, you know, one more time, so it's concise.
Okay, so that we'll sign the plan that has the grass on away with, with recycled gravel. One building, it has sprinklers. How did you want me to say that? All underground structures are road rated, subsurface structures, road rated. Fire hydrant, do I need to specify where it need, 500 feet from the road?
No, no, it shows it on the plan.
As per the latest point.
As per the plan?
As per the plan, yeah.
And the plan shows the dumpster move to what I would call the southeast corner, and that is.
That would be.
Different also from the plan, does it have to be made mention that it's changed from 12 to 20 feet between the?
Well, as per the plan.
Yeah, as per the plan.
Okay.
Separation's as per the plan.
So, so do you understand that, like, you'll just get us a plan that shows that as one building? And then is there anything else? Oh, and then to, when, what's his name comes back, have the grass taken away, and then we'll sign that plan? Okay? Does that make sense?
Uh huh.
Am I right?
Yeah.
Do you agree to all that? You have to agree to all that, you're all good, okay.
Who wants to leave here tonight with something signed as well?
Well, I don't think we can sign this, can we? Without the, because it's not going to be on here. But is the guy going to be in tomorrow that we can, because I'll, I'll come.
I don't know his schedule, later, so he wasn't in today to do it. We got the email the day before, so.
Well, we can.
Well, I mean, he can start, he can start doing the site work based on it, but then just get the plan that we'll sign.
Yeah, I was going to.
I can get a bill of the permit, I got a hold of it, it's going to take three months in office.
Okay.
It's going to be back to when I'm putting the foundation.
Okay.
You're good to go. We just need the plan finalized so we can sign off on the plan and we can give you the.
And we can do that before the next meeting, because as soon as it's in the office, we can all come in and sign.
We'll vote it and sign it as soon as the, we'll have to vote it in a moment.
Was there anything else that we needed to add?
No, as luck would have it, the fire chief did call me around 4:30, 5 o'clock, because mine was the only number the Kendra had. So we went over and noticed exactly the things we covered, so I think we're good.
And it kind of goes along with the note that he sent in.
Yeah, yeah. So we're good.
You need a second?
Yeah.
So there's a.
You're not used to doing it.
There's a motion on the board, go ahead. Sorry.
It's all right. We have a motion to accept the plan as presented with the stipulations that were enumerated. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. We need a roll call vote because we have somebody on Zoom. I'll start with Bruce.
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Jamie?
Yes.
Sounds unanimous to me. Okay, so you've got a vote, we have to sign the document and endorse a plan.
It will need a Miler, right?
Yeah.
They don't know, they don't know, you don't have a Miler on anything anyway.
A what?
A Miler is almost, what do you call that?
Yeah, it's like.
And it gets recorded at the register, where we know. He'll plug it at all.
With Joe.
So that we can sign it, and then that's what goes to the registry.
You can record it, yeah.
We'll have a decision in mind, we can do a full review as well. Okay, it'll be easier.
All right.
Thanks, Tom.
Take care.
Congrats on your, um.
Thank you.
All right, moving along.
Can I have a piece of paper?
Sure.
So that I can write down that stuff.
I've got some of it jotted down.
And then I want you to look over it and make sure it's all right, okay?
Next up is 539 Plymouth Street. Planning Board Special Permit Number 25-3. Is anybody here for that?
Hold on, is that, did you say 539?
Yep.
Okay, so at the last meeting, we motioned to have an extension on that. Just as a notice, not on the meeting, I'm not on line and I'm missing it. I don't think it's on the meeting. But the only reason I noticed it is because I was looking to make sure that the date, I think we gave 45 or 60 days, if I'm right.
Yeah, I remembered that so that we had plenty of time to, okay.
You know what I think?
Until September, the end of September.
That's right, thank you. Can I ask for a convenience thing, that the expiration dates of the site plan just be put right next to each application that's on our agenda, just so that we have it and it's easier?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
We always rely on you.
Did you hear that, Danielle? Amy, it's time to. Danielle? Amy was suggesting, it's probably a good idea. When you list the, the application to be reviewed, if you could jot at the end the most recent expiration date?
I can do that for you. Reminder, it is the applicant's job to extend if they need to.
Yeah, no, yeah, that's a given, but that way at least we have quick reference as to when it expires. Thank you.
Boy, changes us the new chairman all the time.
Lay down the law.
Cut that whip out. All right, moving along. Planning Board Special Permit 25-4, 590 Monpasta Street for a site plan review, and it says it's new, so this is first time in, right?
Yeah, we don't have full seconds, I'm pretty sure we're outside, so.
Close.
And we did that, it's a small one, huh?
You already went to conservation, I think.
Yes, conservation.
I remember you then. Yep, I was there.
Yeah.
When was that?
And I love your outfit with your shoes. You look so pretty.
I'm sorry?
Oh, thanks.
Like years ago?
No, no.
Vintage today.
Oh, it was?
Yeah, it was. It's a little distorted, we don't know what I'm by something, though.
Just out of curiosity, have you spoken to the building inspector at all in terms of zoning?
No, so we haven't talked to him about zoning. So I thought the next step was to go site plan review, but it's not.
Well, site plan review is where you're going to have to, you know, show up, but it always ends up being better to have a zoning determination that, you know, I'm assuming the use is okay, but if you have at least an acknowledgement that the use is okay, rather than get through all of this and have an issue with zoning.
Yeah.
Is there, is there mixed use?
No, so it used to be a mixed use.
Yes, it was.
The permit expired, because there was like a special permit or whatever.
That was for the apartment upstairs.
Yeah, there was two apartments upstairs, and then there was three commercial on the bottom. And it changed to two commercial and then two apartments.
Right.
And then the two apartments, which was a mixed use special permit, it was only like 10 years or 15 years, that expired. So now it's strictly back to business.
Right, and so that was the previous owner, not, not the current owner?
No, it was the same owner.
When we first did the mix owner on the zoning board, that was many moments ago.
Yeah, and that was because it was pre-existing, non-conforming, and I think the idea was to let it continue because of that. But when you bought it, it was still being occupied upstairs, right?
Yeah, so it was still two apartments up top, and then it was three units on the bottom, commercial units.
Yeah.
And then.
Was the hair salon still there when you bought it?
Yes.
Yeah, the hair salon, we, they moved out like three years ago, or two years ago.
Okay.
All right, so what are you going with? You said it's changed, I'm sorry, interrupted you.
No, it's all right. So we were going to, we want to put a coffee shop in our own, and then we also wanted to do a small event space that does like pop-up shops, yoga classes, stuff like that. So that's what we were trying to do.
On the first floor?
First floor and second floor. But the first floor is just the coffee shop and the event space, and then the event space is only second floor, not coffee shop, two floors, obviously. And then small weddings, possible.
How are you going to deal with handicap accessibility?
So right now, it is handicap accessible, not to the second floor.
Yeah, I was going to say.
To the first floor it is for the coffee shop.
There's a ramp there.
Yeah, so the second floor it won't be ADA.
So there aren't going to be residents on the second floor at all?
No, it hasn't been.
It's like, no, no residents. There haven't been residents in years.
Right, right. But it's not, yeah.
No, so no residents on the second floor. We're not going for a mixed use, none of that.
But you do want to use it for commercials, you know, for events, classes and events and stuff, right?
Yeah.
So you're still going to have to deal with accessibility.
Yeah, ADA compliance.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that, you're going to have to get creative there because you're either.
You're going to have to really create.
Yeah.
Well, I thought, but I thought it was private.
You're under the public. You need to talk to the building inspector.
I'll talk to them. Who was it about?
Joe.
Joe Bragan. He's scared in very limited amount of time.
Is he interim, or is he a, is he a?
He's interim.
That's what I thought.
He's knowledgeable guy, I mean, he can.
Very knowledgeable, and if you go down there, because I think he's with a couple or another town, at least one other town anyway.
Maybe from the Cape.
They'll give you his business card, and if you call him, he's very good about either calling you back and going over whatever you want, so he is very knowledgeable about that.
So I knew, the one thing I do know we won't have is enough spots.
Parking?
Yeah, so we've talked to the church, it's a third across the street, about leasing spots. No, I don't know how to work with a site plan review.
Is that what you mean?
For like, how you would review that, you know what I mean?
I'll be honest with you, I don't know how you'd do that. If you don't own the property, if you lease.
You'd have to get an easement.
No, we already talked to the church.
No, no, I understand.
You'd have to get an easement for use from the church.
Yeah, but that aside, we've got to look through the bylaws to see if it has to be on site.
Well, kind of like, I was wondering.
Bruce can't. Yeah, that's an automatic.
Oh, oh, should we, should we recess for a minute?
Yes.
Caesar?
Yeah.
Do you want to announce that?
All right, so we're going to recess for a few minutes. Do we get Bert, uh, Bert, Bruce back?
Is Bert short for Bruce?
Yeah, that's it. Bruce, Bert, Bert, Bruce.
Is Bruce the full name, or is it short for something? Does anybody know? Since we were talking about names, we were talking about names before the meeting.
Oh, okay.
That's why we're all, that's why it's a joke to us.
All right.
Sorry.
How long ago did Bruce, I don't know.
I don't know. I mean, we still have quorum, so that's not an issue, but.
Give it a minute, you think?
We're 98% there, according to the screen.
I was wondering who you were looking at.
Pull the app back up.
It's always that last 2% that takes forever.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I know we're going to get a denial, I mean, the coffee shop passed before with adding our experience.
We talked about it, but it didn't pass.
No, one building inspector, Bert, right.
No, but it would have to come to planning, so it didn't pass. Like, they might have been okay with the idea, but it still would have had to come here.
I had a building permit for the coffee shop. Just the coffee shop, not the event space.
I was going to say, you could probably have the parking and everything, but.
For the coffee shop, yeah.
But I thought the change of use.
I don't know, I wasn't.
Well, anyway, it's neither here nor there. I'm not saying.
So I think we just do the whole thing at once, so we didn't even. So I figured we just do the whole thing at once, so we didn't even do anything in the coffee shop.
Yeah, no, I know.
We did nothing, so.
Well, that's the smart way to do it, is get everything you wanna try to do in one shot, see where it goes, rather than keep coming back piecemeal, and then that just makes it.
Check for times too, to see if in fact, like, say if you got approved for it, there may be.
Throw the whole thing out.
Hey, Bruce is back.
There he is.
Hi.
You're back.
I'm back.
Excellent.
It may be only.
Do you know?
In force for a certain period of time, a year or two years, could be. So just check, what I'm saying, just check your time, make sure you're good.
Have you read most of this, or do you need any recap?
Absolutely, I read most of it, yes. Just cut out, uh, a short time ago.
Okay, good, all right.
So you don't know the parking thing? That's never happened in this stuff? Like, I was thinking like a valet setup?
It has, 266 to 265 Monpont Street, 266 Monpont Street being built now, the apartment, um, sorry, the condos.
Yeah, the condos.
They have parking across the street.
They own both properties and, and they're putting in a crosswalk and.
No, I know, but it has, true, true, true.
I didn't wanna go into the crosswalk thing, but, you know, there was some.
Tom, they called you earlier today, like, so, Pat Scully, um, a whole crosswalk.
Could you give us your name, please?
Patrick Scully.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't get the call.
The message said, anyway.
Been a busy day.
Because if we did rent from across the street, we wanted to see what the requirement would be for a crosswalk from the parking lot. Sounds like they wanna avoid a crosswalk. Yeah.
Who does?
Who does?
Well, you need one right there.
Oh, not necessarily, I don't think that's what he meant.
No, I mean, I, if you're gonna have people walking across the street, especially for events, I think the crosswalk is a necessary thing. I don't know what kind of feedback we'd get from everybody about that because it's in sort of a through way there.
Yeah, it turns into kind of a struggle.
Yeah, exactly. We required a crosswalk or suggested a crosswalk up the street there. It's pretty close to where the intersection is anyway, so it wasn't gonna be quite as much impact.
And there were gonna be, it was gonna be lighted.
Yeah, yeah.
The one on, on.
The bottom.
Yeah. No, 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 not a street light, but flashing light.
Yeah. As an option though, like, let's just talk about this now, the possibility, maybe getting an easement from the Catholic Church for parking.
You've already talked to them, right?
We've talked about.
Would they put it on the deed? An easement? I don't know, they might, I mean, they're, you know, they might. An easement for use of parking with a end date or a lease date or.
Depends on how the hierarchy of the church feels about that kind of stuff in their property. You could do a lot of different things. You could do temporary easements that have to be renewed with the understanding that if you lost the easement, you're shut down.
Yeah, right.
Well, that's one of the reasons that I was saying that they should get one, because if the church did, because they were close to maybe closing previously, so it might benefit you in the future to see if they would give you one, because then it would ride with the property. If they sold, do you see what I'm talking about? Because if all of a sudden that church sold.
So we're adding on the side, we used to park trucks there.
Yeah, and that could happen.
I think it's like six spots maybe out there.
On the south side of the building?
Yeah, if you're looking at the building left side, I don't know.
Is there any room out back?
No, because it's right in the wind.
It is right on the water.
Yeah, and that's a second.
They didn't want us to take out any trees, nothing.
Well, it's also a secondary water supply, so that puts it even more restrictive.
So there's, there's what, 26 spots? 27 spots. 27 spots around the building, including two, ten, eleven.
And we don't have any plans right now, right? Oh, is that the only one?
So we have coffee shop full set of plans and we have site plan full set.
Oh, no, that's three.
The only thing we don't have full set up is the event space. Those are just like renderings and.
So you're gonna get us all updated and, um.
So I can get you site plan final and coffee shop final within the next couple of days. The event space, they're still planned, and then I didn't really wanna go full bore head with like a full set if we don't get approved. So we'll talk to the building board.
If you didn't wanna go full bore, I would definitely make an appointment with the building inspector. Sit down and let him go through it.
He's usually in on Mondays, but I'd give him a call and see if you can set something up for him.
My recommendation would be to honestly talk to that church, cause if you got that event.
No, we have talked to the church multiple hours.
No, I meant to, I meant further.
See about any easement.
Because if, if all of a sudden they sold, then you wouldn't be able to do the street thing anymore.
Depends on how they feel about wanting to sell it. They don't even wanna sell it with an easement on the front of property. Do you wanna see that? Cause that messes up their furniture, but that's up to them.
But don't tell them.
Yeah, right, I'd say that's up to them.
As far as like, so it is feasible, maybe do a crosswalk, it's just the, if it gets approved.
Yeah, it would have, like, public safety would comment.
Yeah, we have, we have a.
The highway enforcement department and the health board commented those were the only two departments.
I keep forgetting how, what they call the board. It's not the highway traffic safety board, it's the, I think I relied on Fred once to remember what that was, and I can't.
Traffic study?
Traffic, maybe.
Pressure's on.
Traffic study, that's probably.
Is it traffic study?
Yeah, they'd take a look at it and see the feasibility of putting a crosswalk in or the problems with putting a crosswalk in. We'd get a recommendation from them.
Since you're here, what are your thoughts on that? Do you mind, do you have any or not, not right now on the spot? Okay, rock on.
Yeah, there isn't really a whole lot to go on yet, but the zoning, I think, is important to make sure you get your zoning determination. Again, you don't wanna go through all this and then have him have an issue with it. He can talk to you about parking too. Eventually, we're gonna send it out to a review engineer who's gonna also address parking if, you know, becomes an issue. Or you might be able to squeeze a few more parking spots on a lot, maybe. I don't think so. I'm pretty familiar with the site, so.
It's like the 17s.
Bobby D's all the time.
What's that?
I said, not Bobby D's all the time.
He can't.
Yeah, I don't see that happening, but you could always park big equipment downstairs. That's the most incredibly built floor I've ever seen.
No, but as we sold our landscape, uh, pushing up.
Oh, you did? Cool.
I saw you sign up on a house being built in Pembroke today.
Yeah, that's an insurance house, a tree for.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I know that those houses were there, I figured it was a demo.
See how fast that went up? Six days, oh, no. We moved our office, the building up here is empty.
Okay. I've seen some projects in town, it seems like they put one stick up a day. I won't say which project, but.
Okay.
One, just a little business, making sure. Danielle, do you know what day, um, they applied for site plan?
It should be on the application in your.
Yeah.
7/29?
Yeah, I was just gonna look for that.
What is it?
So really, we need to have the full plans and go out for comment, so as soon as you can get those, but we're gonna need more time on that site plan, because if 7/29, we have two plus 21 is 23, we're 22 days away. Our next meeting is September 4th, so, I mean, it's not like we'd need an extension now, but we're gonna need that plan. We're gonna have to send it out to all other departments for comments, because you don't really technically have the full plan in.
The plan that I have has been sent out to all the boards, and the expiration for them is 8/23, I believe, so they should have all their comments in by then.
Yeah, the building department had no comment, health board had comment, we got back them, and then also the highway got back to that. They wanted the snow pile location changed, and then they had a problem with maybe some runoff.
I was gonna say, you don't have a whole lot of room to mess around with.
But I, we said at ConCon, we said that we would remove the snow if we had to. We can make that stipulation.
Remove it to where, did you stipulate offsite?
No, we're offsite.
Offsite. There's a whole bunch of regulations for offsite, snow removal.
On the easement?
Well, we can't just push it down. We can't push it into the water in the back.
Send it to Logan for the arm.
We'll stay that. So yes, like, we put the plans, so like, the plans for the.
That's what they used to do.
It's not like, when I say full set, like, there's still like drawings, it still shows that type of stuff, and then there's seat count, which we added in, I think, yesterday?
Yeah.
Yesterday, they added in seat count and stuff like that, so.
Is that one of the plans?
That's, yeah.
Oh.
That's the coffee shop, the coffee shop has a full set. So it's two different spaces?
Yeah.
So coffee shop and event space, so this would be the event.
Is the event place gonna be upstairs?
It's the left side versus, or the building, the event space at the left side.
That's why I'm telling you, you need to talk to the guy.
Do we have elevator needed for that?
Well, that's why I'm telling you, he needs to talk to the building inspector about compliance. Well, that's the only way you're gonna do it, I agree, but.
So what I.
That's huge money.
So if there's gonna be changes to the plans that are great, then we'll have to send them around to boards again, right?
Right.
Especially if we're adding, yeah, especially if we're adding a crosswalk and all of that.
Yeah, I know we'll have to be sending around again, but I was just saying, like, they did start making comments.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Okay, well, that's good, cause then you got some feedback to, I mean, you have to finalize it all.
And you guys are under the gun too.
So we're not wasting time, will we start with the building inspector?
That's what I'd go.
That's my recommendation.
I was wondering, we already talked to, I think it's Bob?
Yeah.
Bob, yeah, Bob, yeah. Most of the stuff he got, the only thing he needs is the title five, but we had a title five from like a year or two ago, and we're just gonna do it a lot.
They're usually good.
The only thing, you guys are, are under the gun also, because your application date was at 7/1.
8/20, oh, 7/29.
You didn't always apply for an extension, but you have, you have to apply for the extension.
I, yeah.
So you'd have to apply for an extension. You know, because if, if your application, the site plan came before us and it was incomplete, like, there's only half the building done and we haven't, if we were running down without an extension, you'd be getting a notebook. You'd be, you know.
Then you'd be back to square one again in two years.
Getting the water for, yeah.
Yeah, that's why.
And it's not our obligation to chase you around to get it done, you know what I mean?
I like to remind everybody, to be fair, that's.
Yeah, yeah, no, reminding's fine.
Exactly.
But at the end of the day, the onus is on the applicant to provide.
Yeah.
A, you know, form of request, either at least an email or.
Yeah.
A letter or something.
Tom, I have a question for you specifically. We were talking about zoning, where they said the building department didn't have any comments.
I don't wanna speak for the building.
No, 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 I don't, I'm just meaning like, we need to have them send that in either way, right?
One of the disadvantages we're operating under, and I'm not casting any aspersions, it's I think, I know Joe's doing a great job.
Intra, yeah.
Yeah, and he's into it, so there's only so much time he's gonna be able to put in. But, you know, we've been working with a disadvantage of not having a full-time building inspector.
We're not gonna make it a gentleman, right?
Yeah.
It's a few towns that follow, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's becoming, well, everybody, towns tend to think they can do without and save some payroll. Except that, then they get in trouble, because you've got, yeah, right, but I don't wanna put on that road.
All right, so we'll go with the building department, and then we'll make some changes.
Apply for an extension.
Apply for an extension, and we'll get you a full set.
Yeah.
And you might wanna think about that elevator and ask him specifically about it.
He's not worried about sprinklers.
I don't think sprinklers, cause that's over.
No, it's technically assembly.
Right, I was just gonna say, it's an A use.
Yeah. It's gonna be both. And the problem I have is the existing water line was actually on Bobby D's property, uh, so we have no water in the building, and it's only.
What's it, T and R off of there? Is that what's happening?
The original water line.
So you're probably gonna have to put in a service.
You know why? Cause they subdivided in 1968.
Yeah. But my problem is, is I think the main line is on the opposite side of the street, so by the opposite.
You gotta go under the street.
We have to come in this street.
Well, the good news is, it hasn't been done within a five-year period, so we can actually do it.
Okay. So do you have any other questions? Do you wanna do a little bit of an extension now, where we're at 23 days and our next meeting is, hold on, nine, 10 plus four is 15 days away.
You're probably gonna need more time than that, but.
Yeah, I mean, we'll be at the 38-day mark at the next meeting.
We can put you on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just let us know that you're not coming in, as long as the date's been extended or we'll ask for it extended.
Okay.
I do have a question on feasibility study.
I'm sorry?
A feasibility study, as far as like traffic on fifty-eight. Is that done internally by you guys and sourced by, by anybody else?
Usually sourced out, we require it sourced out, but talk to Highway, see how we'd like to handle that.
I don't know. All right.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, we would keep Highway happy, so rather than us try to speculate, talk to Steve.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. You're welcome. Sounds fun, you guys.
Yeah, you too.
All right, where are we?
We're moving on to minutes. Six twenty-six, twenty-five, and seven seventeen, twenty-five. Anyone who was at the meeting, had an opportunity to...
So the July seventeenth one, what, hold on, we had a, oh, no, you know what? I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Actually, the August meeting was the one that had the extension for five thirty-nine Plymouth, and that's why it's not on these ones.
That's why it's not on those.
There you go.
I hadn't thought that through yet, sorry.
Jamie, you weren't here for either of these two meetings, so you're excluded. No prejudice here. Have the rest of us had a chance?
Which one are we doing first?
Uh, we'll do six twenty-six, uh, six twenty-six, twenty-five first.
I read through, I didn't have any changes, corrections of the leases. Would you like a motion, Mr. Chip?
Yes, well, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of...
I'll...
June twenty-sixth.
So motion for June twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five, as presented.
I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of six twenty-six, twenty-five. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the meeting minutes of six twenty-six, twenty-five. We're gonna do a roll call vote. I'm gonna start with myself. Yes, Bruce, uh, Bruce.
Fred, call me Fred.
Yeah, Fred. Robert.
Bob.
I vote yes.
Anyway.
Uh, sure.
Bruce?
Yes.
Okay. Of the four voting, four yeses passes. All right, moving on to seven seventeen, twenty-five.